Seven, uh, seven oh one P M. We will be bringing this meeting to order. For those at home, note this meeting is being televised, streamed, or recorded by Born TV. If anyone in the audience is recording or videotaping, they must acknowledge it such at this time. I don't know if anyone is in the audience or online. I don't see Jamie. Okay, he's hearing none. And please refrain from using flash photography. If anyone from the public wishes to access the meeting, they can do so by calling the following conference line. One nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine. Zoom meeting ID eight nine seven one two two nine three five three eight. Password, all caps, BORN. The Zoom chat will not be monitored. Participants who wish to speak must raise the hand icon until the chair asks them to unmute. All items within the meeting agenda are subject to deliberation and votes. And a moment of silence for our, recognize our troops and public safety personnel.
To the flag.
As always.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have someone ready to read the vision, possibly? I'd be happy to, no, it's not on the sheet.
Um, I'll take.
On the back of the hazard, alright, thank you.
Born is a proud community that embraces change while respecting the rich heritage of the town and its villages. It is a municipality based on strong fiscal government with a durable economy that recognizes the rights of all citizens. Respects the environment, especially the coastal areas of the community and the amenities that it affords. Born embraces excellent education and offers to citizens a healthy, active lifestyle.
I'll read the mission.
Thank you, MJ.
Born will maximize opportunities for social and economic development while retaining an attractive, sustainable, and secure coastline and environment for the enjoyment of residents and visitors. Through responsible and professional leadership and in partnership with others, Born will strive to improve the quality of life for all residents living and working in the larger community.
Alright, thank you. And we have the community shout out and recognition today. I mean, I know we have our graduates coming up, of course, it's a little premature to be thanking and congratulating them, but I guess, I don't have any personal shout outs, but I do want to make sure that we thank all of the teachers, right, that have gone through this entire year and done all this work for our students. I know my, my littles are very happy in our school system and it makes me real happy, so I don't know if anybody else?
I got a couple. Um, Upper Cape Tech, uh, baseball for winning the Massachusetts Vocational Schools Baseball Championship and finishing the season twenty-one and three overall. And also a couple retirements of people that have served the community, not in the government capacity, but in a capacity of helping the people of the community. One is Dr. Greg Bowdre in Sagamore, who has helped many people over the years with eye care. And the other is Buddy Towers of Towers Service Center, whose family has been in the auto repair business for many years.
That's right. Thank you, I've known Buddy a long time.
And more recently, John Cofflin.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, he's been on the Recreation Authority for a very long time.
We have the celebration of coming up for him as well.
I also have a shout out for the DECA program at Born High School. If you're familiar with that program, it, um, you know, emerging leaders and entrepreneurs through a co-curricular program at the high school. I recently attended their awards ceremony and they've been recognized, not just at a district level, state level, national level, but at an international level as well. So we want to congratulate those DECA students and Monise Maurice, who is the program director and instructor for, at Born High School.
Very nice.
Uh, me, I want to thank Harold Skelton, who is and has the Fisherman for the Mission twenty-two over the weekend. He had his sea bass tournament, which was very successful. And the revenue that raised from there goes to the wounded veterans that we have here in this area. And that gives me, and avenue to talk about Thursday. Thursday at nine A M., there'll be the Wounded Warrior, fifty men and women on bicycles. Uh, you know, leaving Mass Maritime, going down the Canal Road and down to discuss it and then be back here for eleven A M. We're trying to line people up along Academy Drive before nine A M. and on Main Street. And then closer to eleven A M. so we can cheer them on.
Very good, thank you. Alright, I'm not sure if we have any buddies signed up over there for public comment, I will.
Jean's up there on Zoom.
Jean, oh, yep, Jean, do you have any shout outs this evening by chance?
Well, tonight, thank you.
You got it, no worries, thank you. Um, I'll just read it anyhow, it's good practice for me because this is only my second meeting as chair, so. So next would be public comment, public comment on non-agenda items, of course. I don't believe we have anyone here, but I will say it anyway. Public comments are allowed for up to twelve minutes at the beginning of each meeting. Each speaker is limited to three minutes for comment. Board members are unable to respond due to post and requirements of the open meeting law. And next, I'm really happy and I really want to first just welcome our federal, state, and county delegation today. Really honored to have you all in our presence and here again, I know we do this annually and I know I always look forward to seeing you all in one space. We run into one another different spaces throughout the year, but it's really great to have you all take the time to come here to see us. So, um, we have Senator Warren's offices on first, do we have someone online, I think?
Someone to mute?
Hey, everyone, thank you so much for having me tonight. Uh, my name's Olivia, I am the Senator's Regional Director for Southern Massachusetts.
Thank you. Alright, so does Olivia give him the update, or who's?
Yes, that would be me. So thank you so much, thank you to the Chairwoman and the entire Select Board for taking the time to meet with us tonight. Senator Warren wanted me to pass on her thanks for the invitation to tonight's meetings. Unfortunately unable to attend due to voting commitments in D.C., I'm honored to be here on her behalf. She has worked so hard to sound the alarm about the damage the Trump administration has done to the economy and fighting back against efforts to raise cost, raise costs for families while giving the tax breaks to billionaires. She reads committed to opposing the gutting of federal funding and programs that serve so many communities in Massachusetts, including in the Born area.
You're looking in love in it?
And she'll continue to stand up for vulnerable communities everywhere. Over her tenure as Senator, the Bridge Replacement Project has been one of the highest priorities for her. And she is committed to continuing to work in partnership with our other federal delegation and state partners to bring crucial resources to help this project. So, thank you so much again for everything that you guys do and for taking the time to meet with us today. And I'm happy to connect on any questions you all might have and I look forward to hearing from you guys tonight and in the future, I just recently started in this role and very excited to connect with you all in the future.
Well, thank you so much. Does, um, any of the board have any questions or comments for our friend? Well, thank you very much, we appreciate it and please give Senator Warren our best and, uh, we look forward to hearing more as time goes on, thank you so much. Alright, moving on, Senator Markey's office is next.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um, my name is Katie Morphil, I am Regional Director in Senator Markey's Boston Office and I am his Regional Director covering the South Shore, South Coast, Cape and Islands, which includes the wonderful Born. I'm very glad to be with you all tonight. Similar to what Olivia just shared, the Senate is in session today, so unfortunately due to Senate votes, Senator Markey was unable to join virtually tonight. But I'm glad that I'm able to be here with all of you and just to pass along the Senator's commitment, similar to Senator Warren, to keep fighting. We're in the midst of a difficult time with the Republican majority and the Senators committed to fighting back, making sure that we are protecting vital public programs such as Social Security, Medicare, Medicaid, pushing for expanded funding for vital transportation projects like the Born Bridge, which we obviously know will be a project much bigger than any one Republican-controlled Senate or term president. And also continuing to make sure that we are in partnership at every level from local, state, and federal government that we can be the best partners we can be to all of you. So looking forward to hearing from you all tonight on what our marching orders should be as we report back to our members here at the federal delegation and let them know what the priorities are of the community. Happy to answer any questions we can to the best of our ability and happy to be a resource for anyone. Thank you so much again.
Thank you, we really appreciate your being here and sharing all of those great updates with us. Anyone on the board have any thoughts, questions, comments? Okay, moving on, thank you again. So next, we have Congressman William Keating's office, our friend.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, members of the community, the state and county delegation, folks on Zoom. I get the privilege of being here with you in person, I'm very glad. And it is a great tradition that the board has continued of inviting the entire delegation to come and give an update and a report to you. So, on behalf of Congressman Keating, who unfortunately, the House is also in session tonight, so he couldn't be here with you, he has asked me to come and just, uh, pass along a couple thoughts about some major projects, most which both Katie and Olivia alluded to, the Cape Bridges, which is really project one for our office and for all the delegation. I will say that the Senators' offices and our office work very closely together on this project, on a lot of projects, but, um, this is really the biggest project for our district in terms of infrastructure. So we are very, very focused on getting through the challenges that we face right now. It is a time of uncertainty, but I think we can all agree it is certain that the bridges need to be replaced. And, um, as Katie alluded to, it's a multi-year project, it's a multi-decade project, really. So it's not restricted by any one administration. Just sort of some timely updates, if you will. One thing that our office and with the Senators' offices is working on is the surface reauthorization, surface highway reauthorization process, which is, uh, the way that Congress works is they have reauthorizations of funding for different categories every couple of years. Back, everyone remembers the bipartisan infrastructure law from twenty-twenty-one, which created the mega program, the infra program, the bridge investment program that were the source of the funds for the Sagamore replacement. Well, those were created by the B I L. as part of that surface highway reauthorization process. So, uh, it is anticipated there'll be another surface highway reauthorization either in twenty-six or twenty-seven. And, um, you know, we're working with the Transportation and Infrastructure Subcommittee to make sure that those grant programs are continued or the intent and effect of those grant programs are continued in some shape or form. You know, everyone likes to call their pet programs by their pet names, uh, but that's, that's a huge priority for the Congressman. We want to ensure that federal transportation programs recognize the needs of seasonal communities in making discretionary grant and formula funding decisions. Uh, we want to work to create or maintain the direct federal program to replace and improve bridge infrastructure and low-lying road infrastructure. And we're, obviously, we're concerned about rescission of grants. There's been some executive orders that could impact the funding that's already been received or the funding that's in the pipeline. Again, there's a lot of uncertainty because there are, there are legal cases about the impact of those executive orders. Can't tell you what we don't know, we don't have a crystal ball, but we're watching that very closely and, again, working with partners in the House and the Senate, partners in the state as well, the Attorney General's Office right here in Massachusetts, to keep an eye on those lawsuits and what the impact of those executive orders will be. I don't want to get too deep in the weeds on the recent budget bill unless there are specific questions. A, because it's not my area of expertise, but also because it's such a huge bill that's going to have a great impact. Just on Medicaid alone, um, the House has already passed the bill, Congressman Keating did not support it. The Senate will be taking it up within the next couple of weeks, I think by July fourth, they're intending to pass that bill. There are some policy items that were allowed in the House that may not be allowed in the Senate. So we'll have to keep an eye on that. And that, it might not be the same impact on Medicaid or other programs like SNAP, housing programs that were part of the House program, so we'll keep an eye on that as well. I know one of Congressman Keating's priorities over the years has been combating substance use disorder and fatal overdoses. And, um, losing Medicaid or reducing Medicaid significantly will have a huge impact on the healthcare system's ability to provide medication-assisted treatment to people with substance use disorder. And, uh, we made great strides over the last couple of years. The DA can attest to the fact that fatal overdoses are down all across the country and here in Massachusetts. It would really be a shame if those trends were reversed because of a, uh, an unforced error, I guess, is the way to put it. Because taking away Medicaid is going to force a lot of people off of those treatments, so. Something we're very concerned about, I know the Senators are concerned about that issue as well. And something, like I said, we've made a lot of great strides and we don't want to lose those advances, so. I think that's all I have for my report unless there are any questions.
Any comments? Yeah, I just want to, just very quickly, I think, I thank you, I, uh, the opioid situation and the medications that are lifesaving and have proved to have brought these numbers down, it's critical that we keep those services going because I fear that those numbers are going to climb if those services are missing. Because, you know, you can get the naloxone and all of these lifesaving medications at C V S. You can, people can walk in and get them, that may stop with this change, so thank you for that.
Yeah, and Suboxone and Vivitrol and Methadone. I mean, Methadone is sort of the, the granddaddy of the medication-assisted treatment, but there are so many more options, they're looking at Ozempic as a possible treatment for, uh, for addiction. And Massachusetts has always been way ahead of the whole country. We really have been a leader in substance use treatment, recovery, harm reduction. And those are the things that have really contributed to the advances and the victories that we've won. Would hate to see us go back on that.
Thank you, it's been significant, so keep up the good work, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, State Senator Dylan Upinandis.
Uh, well, it's a, it's a privilege to be here, good to see everyone. And, uh, hope your, hope your summer's going well. I, I'll give a brief update, I know we have a lot of people lined up, but it's an honor to represent Born, honored to represent this community. And, um, you know, I think we've, you know, only been in office now representing the town for, well, about six months. Less than six months. Uh, but I think we've already been able to accomplish a decent amount. One of the biggest things, of course, was, uh, you know, when the state's only mental health center on the Cape and Islands in Pecasset was set to close, we really rallied against that and voiced our support for keeping it open and, you know, David Viera, the sheriff, the, well, everyone here. DA, the Congressman, um, you know, really, you know, backed keeping this, this open. And we were able to have the, the governor put a pause on that. And we just went through the budget cycle and, and proud to announce that on the Senate side, we secured four point eight million dollars in the budget for Pecasset to make sure it's fully funded this year, which is, you know, a, a huge deal and, and hopefully, you know, that gets, that four point eight million is, is what's in the final budget as it goes to negotiations with the House. But that's really important to have it, have it fully funded. We got a few other things I want to note in the, in, in a couple of different budgets for Born. One's around a hundred and fifty thousand for the Buzzards Bay Coalition for water quality monitoring. This is something I've gotten in, in previous years as well, but it's really important just to support good water quality in Buzzards Bay. Make sure it has the monitoring that it, that it needs. Uh, we got twenty-five thousand for the Sagamore Visitors Center, uh, which I know is really important in expanding tourism in the town, especially with the upcoming season and how big of an economic driver that is for Born and, and really this entire region. We got another twenty-five thousand for a Buzzards Bay commuter rail study. So we've talked about, we have legislation filed and we've talked about this in, in the past. But, you know, we have legislation filed to try to bring commuter rail down to Buzzards Bay as commuter rail is finally opened up for South Coast Rail and it has access to Fall River and New Bedford. Born, which is an MBTA community and has been paying into this for, well, for, for a long time now. And, and really, it, it's just a reminder of, um, you know, Tom Kehire too and his incredible legacy. This is, of course, was something that he was really active and engaged in and, and losing him is such a loss for transportation here in Born and, and really this entire region. But, uh, you know, this opens up an opportunity going from the Middleborough route to extend down to Buzzards Bay. And, uh, the track is already upgraded to a speed that could fit that, uh, that type of, uh, kind of rail service. And so now we just have, you know, we fund this study, say, okay, how much does it cost to do the other things? Not upgrade the track, but, uh, you know, the platform upgrade, the signal upgrades, how much would that actually cost? Then we could probably put that in a bond bill, um, and hopefully, and, and this is all steps towards working toward getting commuter rail access to Buzzards Bay, which I think would be a great thing for expanding transportation access, economic development, and so many other things for this community. We also got funding for PFAS-free firefighter gear for the town. You know, Massachusetts, our state legislature, where we led on this, led the nation in, in calling for the ending of PFAS and firefighter gear. But it really doesn't exist yet, the gear doesn't, and some of it's quite expensive, a lot of it's kind of early stages. And so these departments need a little extra support and a little extra funding there. Also wanted to note that, of course, as been mentioned previously, Cape Bridges, biggest issue, going to impact our entire region, but Born's really the heart of it. And so we've made it a priority to, uh, have, give, give people in Born a voice in these projects. And we've launched a forum series with Louisa Pejwansky, who's the head of it for the state. We had our first, uh, forum right down the road at the Maritime Academy. You know, I think are almost somewhere between two and three hundred people. A lot of people from, from Born and, and this area showed up. And we're going to keep doing that to make sure that people have a voice and a say in the most, uh, in the largest infrastructure project since the canals were built. And so we're going to keep, continue to do that. Our next one is, uh, is going to be in Sandwich, right down the road. And we have a date set for that, that's escaping me, but we can, we can get you guys a date for that. We'll, we'll announce it, luckily, we, I think we got a lot of press announcing it. For the first one is why so many people came, and I think that's really important so that people know about it and can have their, their voice heard. So those are just some of the, you know, the big things that we've been working on in a short period of time. Getting funding for the town, saving the mental health facility, making sure that residents have a voice in the biggest project that's going to impact all of our lives, but particularly Born. And then thinking, thinking about the future, about what different transportation options look like in terms of a train and others. But it's just, you know, we have a, I have a great relationship with everyone on this board and I really value our, the open communication that we have and, you know, know that I can reach out to you anytime and you can reach out to me anytime to, to support the town and, and the people living here, so thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or?
Yeah, I have a couple, a couple. First of all, I want to thank you and Representative Viera and Sheriff Buckley and a couple others for your quick action on the Pecasset mental health issue. And, um, that, I think, was really critical to saving a really important resource in Pecasset and for children that go to the other center that's involved, so thank you very much for that. I think that getting, um, going on the commuter rail for Buzzards Bay is a really great idea, but we've been waiting a long time. I think twenty fifteen, we passed, twenty fifteen is when we passed our becoming part of the MBTA. So that's really good. There have been some concern raised about the wording of the bill that includes wording of Fama Secondary, which is people who are advocates for going rail to trail, really nervous that it's going to cause. really nervous that it's going to cause monkey wrench on repeat a study that was done in 2021. So there was a whole feasibility study that was done in 2021 about commuter rail going over the, over the canal. And so, you know, that was quite extensive and it showed to be cost prohibitive. So I think it's really important from the people that I've talked to that it be focused on the commuter rail in Buzzards Bay and not raise concepts of reopening the FALMA secondary as a commuter rail.
Yeah, so we took that out, actually.
Okay.
So it doesn't exist in the bill.
Great.
So, you know, that, yeah, so you're good. You're good. Yeah, we, the previous bill had two sections. We took out, we took out that section of the bill on the Senate side. The representative from Barnstable, Kip Diggs, filed a bill with that in it. But that's just because he copied and pasted from last year. I wouldn't worry about it. It's not, you know, that, I wouldn't, it's that, the piece that we're focused on and the piece that would move is just the piece around just, just Buzzards Bay. And look, there's no, it's just not possible right now, you know, to even have that go over, right? It's just not even at all feasible right now. You know, for people, you guys are aware, but for people listening, you know, they have to shut down the canal every time they lower the bridge. The Cape Flyer wanted to do one extra run on the weekends. The Army Corps wouldn't let them even do that. So this notion that, like, this notion that it's going to go over and the bridge anytime soon, it's just, it's not going to happen. So that's basically a dead, it's worth raising, MJ, but it's, you know, it's a dead issue. And we've taken out on our, from our side based upon, based upon that feedback.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you very much for the update.
Yeah, you bet.
With wastewater a huge issue in this community, we're doing SCWMP. And part of it is based on the new Title V regs from DEP that were forced upon communities down here in Southeastern Mass. And no matter what happens, homeowners here are going to have to put money out of pocket either towards a, an alternative septic system or towards sewer some capacity. And I know the county has the, the septic loan program, but, I mean, people in this, in this community need more than just that. I mean, could these systems, it could be upwards of six figures. And on top of property taxes and every other expense, they just can't do it. And so if there's any way in the future that we can get the state to give communities, you know, some reimbursement or help, help the average homeowner out, it would be, it would be better. Because it's, you know, it's, it's only going to get more expensive. And I know people who are older, in their 90s, who can't afford to stay home anymore because of the costs that are going up. So if there's any way that we can do to see that the state can find some money back to the communities to offset the cost of implementing these Title V regs, you know, either through sewer or home, home septic systems, I'm sure any money is greatly appreciated. I mean, it's just, it's like an unfunded mandate. They want us to do it, but these people don't, we don't have the money to dish out. And so.
Yeah, no, it's a big issue. And, and water quality is a huge issue in our region. And, you know, and we, we have some really poor water quality in a lot of areas to the point where every year on the Cape, beaches get shut down during the peak of the summer because of basically sewage and other things in the water. So it's a balance too. I mean, on the, you know, we also need to make sure that our economy survives too. And if we were shutting down beaches because of, you know, wastewater and other issues, that has huge impacts as well. But I, but I agree that, you know, the state needs to do more. The Cape delegation, we passed the biggest water infrastructure bill ever for the Cape and Islands and the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund, raising a billion dollars that just stays on Cape, doesn't go back to the state. Specifically for, for water quality, pipes and pumps can help with septic tanks and other issues. So I think that's, you know, from a, from a legislative perspective, you know, we've taken some big action there. And then also we passed in the tax bill, which is new because it passed the last session. So I don't think homeowners are quite aware of it yet, but we tripled the septic tax credit. So we went from $6,000 to $18,000, which is a huge, you know, for a tax credit, that's actually, that's quite a big jump. And then you've got a zero interest loan on top of that, which I think you're alluding to, Peter. So, you know, we've, from a delegation perspective, you know, the biggest wastewater fund ever for our region and then tripling of the tax credit are, are big things for us. The tax credit, it is one issue for, that Rev. Viera and I are working on is, you know, that's, you have to have tax liability to get the tax credit, right? And there's a lot of people that live on fixed income or don't have any, or, you know, and the like. They just don't have a tax liability. And so we're working on language to have those people be able to access, access that. Because, you know, our region has, I think Barnstable County is like the third or fourth oldest county demographically in, in the country. And so we know we have a lot of people that are probably in, in that kind of bracket that could use that, that tax refund, but might not have the tax liability. So that's another thing we're, we're working on to get more money back into the hands of homeowners that might have to, have to go through some of these upgrades.
And then one last thing, and I know I'll be, I'll be a broken record on this. Could I say it at the bridge meetings all the time? We need to somehow find a way to get the Upper Cape Tech entrance on the tip program sooner than later. Because I know we're trying to build it, you know, build that replacement in as part of the bridge replacement project. But we don't know what's going to happen down the Born Bridge side of it anytime soon. And that is, and that's an area that is, it's, it's a very big safety issue. And that, so if we can somehow, for the, you know, for the tip program, but we can get that project put on that list and elevate the funding to get that done sooner, we'll be doing a lot for the Upper Cape Tech, for the students and the teachers and everybody up there. Because it's, it's one major action waiting for happening.
Yeah, no, it's a good point. And we'll continue, you know, we raised that with the head of the mega project. So I know that's kind of on their radar. And then, Dave, are you still on the bonding committee? No? Okay. Well, you know, we have a transportation bond bill, I think, coming up this session. So that might be an opportunity too to, you know, kind of use that and get some bond money so that, you know, it has some, some backing for, for when, you know, when this project does come around and, and those changes are going to be made.
And I look forward to see what comes out of next Tuesday's update, you know, from the working group.
Yeah, yeah, great.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Just to piggyback off the Mass Bridge program. I mean, a phenomenal job by, by all, by everyone in order to get that funding done and accomplished for the Sagamore Bridge. I know it was exhausting. There is, there's a little bit of, of fear that, that the momentum isn't going to get carried as much for the Born Bridge as well in trying to navigate how to get that funded. Because it's just as critical, as you know, preaching to the choir, right? About the Born Bridge replacement. So what can we do as a community to sort of help with that, that process and to maintain that momentum and trying to, you know, navigate the funding for Born Bridge?
Yeah, well, look, I, you know, there's a few things, right? I mean, one, this is, these are federally operated and owned bridges. And so, like, the Army Corps of Engineers, federal government is on the hook for this. And they need to step up and pay for the bridges that are functionally obsolete that, that they own. So, you know, I think, you know, I know that Congressman Keating and Senators Warren and Marky are working really hard there. Of course, they're in the minority right now, so elections have consequences. And, you know, I think the biggest thing we can do is try to get the delegation back in the majority so that we can help secure some of this, some of this funding. From a state perspective, this administration, the Healy administration, unlike the Baker administration, actually, has put a lot more, literally doubled the money towards this, which made our, the, the grant a lot more competitive. And it's the reason we, we were able to get the other, you know, have that match to be eligible to get those, you know, the, the bigger federal grants. So they're taking this a lot more seriously, which is encouraging. And we have a drumbeat going with them on, on this. And, and, you know, you guys have probably met Louisa. She's, you know, hired and laser focused on this as well from the state perspective. And you could, you know, know that the state is doing everything we can and putting all the money, the state match out there to make us, to make us competitive. And we're going to keep doing that. Ultimately, these are federally owned and operated bridges. And look, you know, I, you know, I have some ideas too around if they, if it doesn't come through. But the end of the day, like, we, you know, there's, there's this Army Corps Major Rehabilitation Report, right? That says that, you know, by 2029, we need to get this funding or else it kind of triggers this major rehabilitation, which would be a disaster for, for, for me. Because I live here and for everyone, for everyone in the community. So.
It's 18 months shutdown from what we were told in that report.
Yeah, that's right. And that's one lane for quite a while after that. So I think it's nine months shutdown and then two years of one lane, which is just crazy. So, you know, yeah, so there's, there's, believe me, I feel a sense of urgency on this, which is why I've, you know, brought down the head of the project here. And ultimately, the, the people that own these bridges and are legally obligated to operate them need to, need to step up to and help with the funding.
All right.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Your pleasure. Appreciate it.
Okay, next we have State Representative Dave Viera.
Thank you. Great to be back. We've covered a lot. I'm going to touch on a few things we did cover, maybe with a slightly different perspective. Dylan had asked if I'm still on the bonding committee. I'm not. I was a ranking member of bonding for a number of years, but I'm the third assistant leader now in the Republican caucus. So I had to give up the position as ranking member of bonding, but helped get the new ranking member appointed. So we have a good relationship with, with the bonding committing as well. So the question that was just asked, what specifically can we do about Born Bridge? Write this one down. House 4083, okay? House 4083 is an act relative to the replacement of the Born Bridge.
Okay.
So when I was ranking member of the bonding committee, we got written in the House version of the transportation bill, the first allocation of $350 million as a matching fund for the bridges, the bridges together, right? And the administration, the Baker administration, had gone after federal grants and lost two rounds of federal grants. The match wasn't substantial enough. The Healy administration had a great idea, was to go through the capital bond, excuse me, the Capital Improvement Plan process and double it, put 350 on top of the authorized 350. And that is what helped us secure the funding for the Sagamore Bridge. We do not have any additional authorization on the book for the Born Bridge right now. Nor did the CIP that just got released by the governor a few weeks ago include anything in the CIP additional to the allocation that she made, because she made a significant contribution of the additional 350 to get us there. So the bill that I've introduced, House 4083, looks to establish a specific fund in the Commonwealth called the Born Bridge Replacement Fund. And then it looks to transfer from the trust fund that now has a $1.2 billion surplus for the money for education and transportation from the millionaire's tax. We expected a billion to come in, and we had 2.2 billion come in. So my idea is we're going to create this fund, and it hasn't had a public hearing yet, we're working on that. But we're going to create a fund and we're going to transfer just 200 million in the first year. But the fund during this bill is authorized to compound interest. And we know that it's another 10 or 12 years till that bridge is actually going to be going, right? So if we just put 200 in this year and 200 in next year and maybe 200 the year after, that 600 million is going to compound interest up to the point where we have to break ground on the bridge. And so we're not asking for a billion at the start, although we could ask that, but you're not going to get it. We know we're not going to get that on the state side. As Dylan said, it's a federal bridge. So the, the federal government has to put in most of the skin in the game. Of course, then they're going to take all the skin out of the game because there's an assigned MOU that they're going to give it back to the state and we're going to have to maintain it in perpetuity after that, but that's another issue. So House 4083, when it has a public hearing, we'll let you know. But even before then, writing letters to the committee, talking about moving it through. It's in the revenue committee right now. I have a funny feeling it'll get out of revenue and end up in transportation at some point. It's one of those bills that might be bounced back and forth. But it's also the language of something that when the next transportation bond bill comes through, if it comes through this session, I'll look to mirror an amendment to the, to that bill, the language of, of the statute itself. The other one was the environmental bond bill. We haven't seen it in the last session. We thought we were going to get there, but we got a logjam at the end of session with bond bills. And so the governor rightfully decided not to throw anything into the mix at the, at the end stage. So we know the administration is preparing in the near future to release an environmental bond bill that we'll be taking up. And so one of the things that the Cape delegation will be looking at is making sure that there's funding there that can help collateralize some of that fund that already exists on the Cape that Dylan mentioned, that we put together with the tax on the lodging and the short-term rentals to see if we can actually carve out some additional capitalization that can go directly towards projects in the Cape region and be administered through the process that we're already familiar with. And you're all making a great step forward. You're almost done with your comprehensive certified wastewater management plan. You've asked for the drafting of notice of intent to look at some watershed plans, which I think is a really good idea, because that gives us the opportunity to look at these funding mechanisms to be able to fund some of those major portions in the nitrogen-sensitive areas and not put it directly on the individual taxpayer. But for those individual taxpayers that are going to have to deal with that, my bill is the one that Senator Fernandez referenced. It is to make the septic tax credit a refundable tax credit. And again, over the course of the six years, the 18,000, 4,000 per year. But if you have a tax liability that's less than this credit, then the Commonwealth would refund you on your return, the additional amount up to the 4,000 per year, maximum of the 18,000 over the course of the six years. So we're working on that. I know the Selectment Counselors Association had talked about it earlier this, this year when we introduced it. The wastewater board has been talking about it. And that's another one that we're waiting to move forward with the, with the hearing process. Let's see, commuter rail. We talked about commuter rail. And MJ, you mentioned the 2021 study, yeah. So in, in 2013, I hosted the first meeting in the room next door. Brought down everybody. We talked about it. Two years later, you went to town meeting. We did it. We literally had the train deck parked at Joint Base Cape Cod to run that feeder service as a pilot. And that's when the Financial Control Board of the MTA said, we don't want to do any, any new expansions right now. And they voted against the pilot study to Middleborough, okay? To the old Middleborough Station. Over the course of that, through, through some personal relationships and strong work of Tom Care, he helped us work with the folks that were designing the new Middleborough Station. And this is in the 2021 study about the cross-platform transfer to be able to bring up ridership and to be able to have space at Middleborough for the feeder line coming out of Buzzards Bay. So that is part of the design. The transfer platform is not there yet. The space is there for it. The numerical study is there. And the crossings and upgrades, as we know, have already been taken care of because of the Cape Flyer. So we can get end of line in Buzzards Bay with a feeder service to Middleborough as soon as we can get the design for the cross-platform transfer and make sure the South Coast Rail starts, you know, running on time. Y'all got some messages from me about trying to set up a meeting a couple of months ago.
Yeah.
We had sort of a slower start than we expected with that. And so that's put us behind on, on actually taking that next step. So, so that's where we're at. We've got the space to do it. We've got the study. We'll do an additional study. It'll, you know, give us new insight. It'll update us from 2021. And then we'll look at that transportation bond bill to see if we can do some earmarking for the upgrade at the station for the cross-platform transfer. The Pecassett Mental Health Center, the Senator covered that. Everybody, I want to thank the DA and the sheriff and the entire delegation. Congressman was able, unable to make the first meeting. He came down, did another. to make the first meeting. He came down, did another site visit. That site visit actually brought in the regional director, because she heard the congressman was coming as well, and that changed a lot of the dialogue on-site, to the point where we are now prepared, over the next probably month, to convene the working group that will be sanctioned by the governor and the administration. We are looking to have it led not by state government, but by a community health organization, and that's what the administration's working on right now. The senator and I have had a number of meetings on this already to look at, what are we going to do with this group? This group is not just going to talk about keeping Pecassett open, although that is how this started, right? This group is going to look at access to mental health services on Cape Cod and the islands. MJ mentioned young people, right? We do not have one mental health bed for juveniles on Cape Cod, yet we have more than half a building that's empty, right? So we're going to look at these opportunities, opportunities for outpatient services, for maybe some juvenile beds, and to expand the existing adult beds at Pecassett. The House, the way we did it in the House, we funded the, the aggregate line item and put a lock on the total number of beds statewide. The Senate was able to actually have more specific language that said, minimum of the six, I think it was the 16 was the language you had, was it 16 in the Senate?
No, it was just the four-point M L.
Okay, it was the money, okay. So they had, they had the money number, we had the bed number of the aggregate. So, so we kind of locked down that the administration has to keep that facility open for the year, and now we've got this year to reimagine so that when the next budget cycle comes through, we can look at, what are we going to fund for the way we're going to provide mental health services down here in, in the southeast region, particularly on Cape Cod. Governor made a small cut, I don't really know why, on the military impact aid. We were able to bring that back to its full funding in the House. The Senate did it as well, which is great, so that means it's in both versions of the bill. So we've got the, the base of the 1.3 million. There's additional money for, for retired folks and their children up in Lincoln, but the 1.3 million is the Bedford-born money that we expect to have every year. So we're good, we're good with military impact aid for this year. And we've reintroduced the easement for the water line over at the National Guard. You know, we've got the pipe running there, but we don't have the easement. The military department was working on responding to questions from council when the, the session ended for roll call votes in the last session, so we're waiting for that, that to move out of committee. That's House 3435. And then your Article 94 transfer with the county at the county hospital, that's House 2351. Again, waiting for that to, to move out of the committee. Let's see, impact aid, water line, Bourne Bridge funding, yeah. I think those are the big ones I had on the list.
Awesome. Well, thank you, as always. Do we have any questions or comments from any of the board?
Great information, though. I mean, thank you. You've got, you're moving in a lot of directions and getting a lot done for us, so I think it's really great.
I think we're all, we're all moving in the same direction, but there's lots of cars moving in the same direction.
But you're all moving in many directions together.
We're all heading in the same direction, right?
I appreciate the reference to the bills.
Forward, that's the direction.
That's the, that's the, that's the thing. And this, I mean, we're talking about this, this long investment in Buzzards Bay commuter rail, right? And one of the most important things I always say is if you, if you look at the out-of-pocket cost to Bourne to date, even since the vote, we deduct the regional transit fee, right, and then there's that residual. If we look at the amount that the administration, both the Baker administration and the Healy administration have put in to the project in relation to the, the value of these studies, we've gotten our money's worth of that additional difference between MBTA assessment and RTA assessment. Now, we've got to make this thing happen in the next couple of years so that it doesn't become a dividend where it doesn't return. But that investment that we made, and it was tough to, for people to understand that, but it was an investment that showed the state, it was worth doing the 2021 study, it was worth doing the layout and design in Middleborough so that we can get there. And we're almost there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, I have State Representative Steve Exaros is, I don't see him here, but does he have somebody up in the space, maybe, in his, his place? I don't see a representative here for him, so that's okay. Well, I guess we can move on to Sheriff Buckley, and if he comes in, sometimes I know he's running so quick, he may show up. So, thank you.
Thank you. Really happy to be here with you tonight. Thank you for doing this. I actually learned a lot, sort of sitting here as well. So it's a great way to get a lot of information quickly. I want to first express my gratitude to the town of Bourne, which is our home, at the sheriff's office. We are really grateful for the support that you give us, especially through the ambulance. Unfortunately, it's a frequent occurrence, but it is always, always great to know that we can count on the town to provide that service to us at the jail and at Joint Base Cape Cod. We have, over this last year, really developed our collaboration with the town. I think since I became sheriff, shortly after that, we've had a longstanding relationship with the Bourne Substance-Free Coalition. The regional lockups, which I know are a huge support to the police department, we also support the police department through the Bureau of Criminal Investigation, as well as the, the resources and personnel that we have that work in the Cape Cod Regional Law Enforcement Council, including our canines and our drones, our equipment and our personnel. And I truly value the relationship that we have with the Bourne Police Department. Our radio techs continue to provide service to the towns, and our community work crews have been busy, actually, in Bourne. Our most recent project was the Buzzards Bay Fire Station. And being able to provide that service through the sheriff's office and at the same time, offer to people who are justice-involved, the ability to perform meaningful service and give back to the community is immeasurable to us. So, and I, I will say to you that there are some towns who aren't welcoming, do not welcome that level of participation. So to be able to know that we can count on Bourne to do that, that we can provide a service to you, but that it also helps with the reentry and reintegration process. So thank you for that.
Can I just ask a question? Was that painting the, the station?
Yes.
Because I was driving down St. Mark's, I don't know, maybe a couple of weeks ago, and I go, wow, the station looks great.
Yes, it does.
It's gray now. And, I mean, it just, it's such an uplift of the Buzzards Bay Station from that yellow to like this, looks really good. So, great work.
I'll pass that along.
Thank you.
Just a few weeks ago, I was actually here in this building. I had a great visit with the veterans group, very animated conversation back and forth. And actually, from that, we're going to be looking to partner together to make sure that we can provide support and services for veterans throughout Barnstable County. And then, sort of the biggest level of support that we are able to provide, not just to Bourne, but to, I think we're at 10 or 11 of the, 12 of the 15 towns in, in the Cape, the Regional Communications Center. As you know, we're, we're located on Joint Base Cape Cod, which is a too-small facility. Once, when I started as sheriff, we started to undertake the process of looking for a new facility. And in the meantime, the sense of urgency around that has increased. Just over this last six months, we've added three new communities, Provincetown, Eastham, and Chatham. There is a compelling need for regionalized 911 service. We don't have enough people to work. And I can't think of a more drastic circumstance than someone picking up the phone to call 911 and not being able to get service. So in our shoebox that we're currently in, we managed to find space and literally used closets to add onboard three new communities, while at the same time, we are looking for a space to build a new facility. Nothing is set in stone, but we are in the exploratory stages of a collaboration, a significant collaboration with Cape Cod Community College. They have land, but what they also have is the ability, you know, for us to work together, to have education and programming so that we can develop a workforce and have a state-of-the-art facility that we can build, have a laboratory, have classroom space, and work with them on the educational component while we are able to find a place that, that can house and meet the 911 needs of Barnstable County. So that project is in the works. We've submitted a joint letter of interest. We're working very closely with DCAM and with State 911. I'm happy to say that, that, you know, the, the way our process works is that there is a portion of the bill that is paid for by each of the communities, but the majority of the support that we get is from State 911, and they have stepped up to the plate. So I look forward to that continuing. So more to come on that. We also continue to, to support our youth academy and our youth officer. We run camps that are free of charge for, we have a Public Safety Explorers Camp, which we ran during both of the school vacations this year and last year. That's open to all, ages 10 to 14, and we're going to be able to run that again this summer, a one-week program of that. And at the same time, we are focusing on a, a three-week youth academy, which is based on referrals and, and is designed for what we refer to as at-risk children, ages 13 to 16, and it's a three-week program. I'm happy to say that Cape Cod Healthcare has stepped up, and they are fully supporting all of our youth programs. Without that, I don't know if, that we would be able to do all the work that we are doing. And we still have a full-time youth officer who frequently comes to Bourne, works closely with school resource officers across Barnstable County, and is able to draw in, as part of our youth academies, officers from various departments, so that, that it's truly an opportunity for our law enforcement community to get to know our kids and our kids to get to know the law enforcement community. New, at the sheriff's office, we unveiled it on April 11th, is the Bridge Center. I don't know if any of you had the opportunity to, to see the opening, but it is literally a place that, for me, sort of cements the vision of, you know, how do we move past incarceration? And what we know is, we have to do work with people while they're incarcerated. But what we have realized is that that can't stop when people get out, because that's, that's where they fall down. And being able to support people in the community post-released, justice-involved individuals and their families, and have a physical place to actually do this work, is something that we are really excited about. So we broke, we had a ribbon cutting in April. The Bridge Center is in Barnstable Village on the Court Complex. It's the former sheriff's residence. It used to be referred to as the White House, but it is a place where we can bring together that, that continuity of services that we provide in-house, healthcare providers. We have a partnership, we're going to be announcing it tomorrow, with Duffy Health Center, so that they're working both in our facility and will be having a physical presence at the Bridge Center. We have housing specialists. We work with HAC, educators, employers, addiction services, and volunteers who come in and offer programming, whether it's legal services, cooking, nutrition. So the, the space is, is still being imagined. We're up and running. It's open. If you're ever in Barnstable Village and you want to go in, it's open most days between 8:30 and 4:30. You're welcome to take a tour. But it is, for us, it, it is the meaning of public safety, what we were referring to as Public Safety 2.0. Our work is to keep the public safe, and the way that we do that is to make sure that we give people the best opportunity to not commit more crimes, to be able to succeed when they were, they're released from jail, to be able to reintegrate, rebuild their lives, and become a contributing member of our community. So that is in the works. And then, at the jail, I'm just going to focus on a few of the things that we're working on right now, but, but one of the, the big, big areas is vocational programming. We have men and women's treatment programs, and embedded in those programs are vocational training. We also have become, since I was here last, a regional women's facility. We house women from Barnstable, women from Nantucket, women from Dukes County, and the women from Essex County. So a little less than half of our population now at the jail is female. We entered into an agreement and have started a program with Home Builders International. The first part of that program is carpentry skills. It's a certificate-based vocational program that teaches essentially how, how to build, how to use tools, how to interview for a job, soup to nuts, with a carpentry-based focus. We offer OSHA training, serve safe and culinary skills. We just, this May 1st, started a, a new endeavor for us. We are actually the contracted provider of the landscape and mowing services in Barnstable Village at the county complex. So we have put together a crew that involves our staff as well as the custodies that are interested and able to learn landscaping and horticulture. And what we've done is, we've worked with, with our staff, who can sort of provide that on-the-job training, as well as with Cape Cod Community College, who is a huge partner of ours, they have developed a curriculum, so that we have an educational component. We have a curriculum, we have a certificate, and it includes both the horticulture and small-engine repair. And at the same time, people are out doing on-the-job training, and we're getting paid for it. So that, that's working, working well for us. We've had, just another example, of employers who are starved for employees, but we've had several employers approach us about coming in to do on-the-job training at the jail. One of those, we just recently did with Pie in the Sky from Falmouth, they came in and decided that they wanted to teach a baking class. And it, we had a cohort of six women who went through the first class, which was four weeks long. But from that, the, the, the plan now is actually, we're open 24/7, we have an industrial-sized kitchen, and we have the interest within the facility, and now the support from experts on the outside to actually think about how we can satisfy food, healthy food, and be able to bake and use skills and, and push those products out. So we're, we're exploring that. So I could go on for hours about everything that's going on at the sheriff's office. If you have any questions, let me know.
Thanks so much. Any comments, questions?
I, I, I just have to say that you are so inspirational that, you know, when you were, right, I think I've said this before, but when you were running, you had this vision of how you wanted to transform the sheriff's office, and you have done everything you said you want, you were going to do, and it's just really terrific. So-
Thank you.
Thank you so much for what you're doing.
Diane?
So I just want to add, you know, piggyback off what MJ said. And I know, you know, we've, we've talked before, and, you know, in the other world that I walk in, right, I do a lot of work in, you know, helping people when they're, or trying to find solutions for people who are either incarcerated, struggling with, you know, substance use addiction, whatever it might be. I mean, whatever they could be addicted to. And doing that work, I mean, it really, it's really, you know, we need people like you that have that vision, because a lot of people give up on these people, and they don't feel, like you said, that once they're in, they get out of prison, that they're, you know, they're, they're good for these jobs. And if we set them up and give them the skills and teach them while they're there, make sure that they don't reoffend when they get out. I mean, I've been doing a lot of research in this area, and I just really love hearing the work you're doing, because that's what it takes, you know, to, to prevent these crimes from happening later. We have to support these people, and, you know, they do their time and they're, I saw a post recently you put out about some graduates from one of your programs or something, and I was just applauding that, because we don't do enough of that. We, we shame where we should be supportive and, you know, helping people get better. So thank you for that.
If I could throw-
If I could throw two more things. That graduation that we had was in our women's treatment program. And what was interesting to me is we had a woman come back who had graduated from the program and had done, it's called the ICE House program. She'd done the program, she'd finished her time, she'd been released. And she reached out and she wanted to come back for the second graduation to support the women that she had been there with. So it was the first time that I'm ever aware of that somebody, like, wants to come in, wants to come back, came back into the secure facility to be a presence. You know, that's inspiring to us and to our staff. The other thing, I just, I meant to mention this, I want to remind you all to, to, to be on the lookout if you are interested. We brought the Frederick Douglass Project for Social Justice to Barnstable County. We are only the second county in Barnstable County and one of a very small number across the country that offer this program. It comes out of Georgetown Law School. We had our first session in March. And my, my goal in bringing this project to Barnstable County is to address just what you talked about. We can't continue to punish people once we let them out of jail. And that's the world that we live in right now. It's impossible to get a job. It's to get a license, to get identification, to find housing, to find transportation. So, and, and there's a community responsibility if we incarcerate people. We have to be able to figure out how we help them move on. And the Frederick Douglass Project is an opportunity for people who are incarcerated to spend an evening with members of the public without regard for what position you hold, where you have conversation, not about why people are there. It's not deep, it's social. But it gives the public the opportunity to see the human side of the people who are incarcerated. And it gives the people who are incarcerated the opportunity to have meaningful, non-judgmental conversations with people in the community that they're coming back to see and live with. So it was highly successful the first time. We're sold out, if you will. But you can go on our website. We will have at least four sessions a year. We have one coming up on June 11th, which is full. But then we have another one in July and another one in October. You're welcome to sign up or reach out to me specifically if you, if you want to make sure you get in. And we welcome you to come, because these, everyone in our jail is getting out. And our hope is that one of the many things that we are doing will be the thing that keeps someone from coming back. So thank you.
Anne Marie has a quick question, I think.
I did. I just wanted to talk a little bit about your youth academy and how you're, how do you identify the at-risk youths? Are there resources?
So they're mostly through referrals. We work with the juvenile court, we work with their probation, which is different than regular probation and parole. We work with school adjustment counselors, we work with the families. It's, it's more of a, a word-of-mouth referral. We work with the school resource officers, some of the people we've identified already ourselves. And it is sort of an intervention, if you will.
Okay. I was going to add, that was going to be my next question. What is the goal of the program?
The goal of the program is to keep youth from, from actually having to do time, which is pretty sad. But yes, and to, to talk about, you know, decision-making and building resilience and confidence in addressing those, those behaviors that, negative behaviors.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, we'll ask, but of course, never leave. Our great friend, District Attorney Galbo is here.
Evening, everybody. If you like doing a seventh inning stretch. This always feels like a little bit of a homecoming for me. Peter knows, and the rest of you may not. My wife and family and I lived here for 18 years in Born. And I served on the planning board for five years with Peter back in the day. And to date us a little bit, Peter, this building didn't exist back then. It was the old community building back then, if you remember. Same space, I think, but not as nearly as pretty as it is now. So it's always great to come back to the town of Born. Before I begin, and I realize it's already been a little bit of a meeting for you, and I promised to keep my remarks under 10 minutes, I'm going to touch upon five topics. I do want to recognize and say thank you to our former state senator and now the clerk of the Barnstable County Superior Court, Susan Moran. She unfortunately could not be here this evening. She had an unavoidable conflict in schedule. But I wanted to certainly give her a shout out and say she's been a tremendous partner in the justice system, and we welcome her presence every single day. And I just want everyone to know that. So five topics in under 10 minutes. I want to start off with a new program we launched about two months ago. We call it CERT, or Child Emergency Response Team. What it is, is a collaborative effort between folks in our office, prosecutors and victim witness assistants, and of course, our law enforcement partners, as well as DCF, or Department of Child and Family Service, our workers, and Children's Co., where we conduct forensic interviews and examinations. It is led by Courtney Skelis. She is the chief of our child protection unit. And what it involves is whenever we have our most vulnerable victims, our children subject to some either physical assault or sexual assault, notification goes out to the team. And it allows us to try to fully investigate whatever occurred as quickly as possible, as well as to try to provide the necessary resources to the victim and the victim's family as quickly as possible. Again, it was launched just about two months ago now. Courtney has conducted two trainings here across the Cape. Each training had north of 60 attendees. So we're really excited with the potential with this particular program. I'm looking forward to coming back next year, which, gulp, next year will be my fourth year, coming before all of you, with an update on this particular new program. I did want to talk a little bit about human trafficking. You might recall when I came before you last year, I talked about how we had recently gotten a grant that is just under $100,000, that allowed us to run a series of trainings across Barnstable County, Nantucket County, and Dukes County. And while there was certainly a focus on the law enforcement side, we were also able to do a training for those working in the hospitality industry as well as the transportation industry. And when we completed those four different trainings, we felt like we were in a good position, that we presented with credibility when we went back to the Office of Grant and Research, saying, "Thank you very much for our initial $97,000. We're going to ask you again for another $100,000, but this time, we want to run a statewide training service." Again, law enforcement, hospitality, transportation, and we brought in some folks in secondary education. They gave us the money. And we had the two-day conference on April 10th and April 11th of this year. We had over 200 attendees on each of the two days. We had 38 presenters from all across the country come in to present during that two-day conference. We certainly had some local folks from the Cape and Islands present, but we also had members of the FBI team. We had the entire five-member Human Trafficking Division of the U.S. Attorney's Office come down, and they were introduced by the U.S. Attorney herself. The folks from the Office of Grant and Research came down just to basically check, go in, check in on us, to see how we were doing. And they, of course, came both day one and day two. They had some really nice things to say. And then just last week, we received a nice notification from them inviting my office to participate in reviewing grant applications submitted by law enforcement agencies all across the state. I believe the due date was last week sometime. And now we're going to be part of the approval process and deciding and handing out funds, grant funds to law enforcement agencies across the Cape, excuse me, across the Commonwealth. I wanted to also talk a little bit about our efforts regarding fentanyl. Some of you might remember, when I first came before you, I explained how I instituted a brand-new policy, literally on day one, the day I was sworn in, that anyone who was charged in trafficking in fentanyl, we would be seeking to hold them without bail under a very powerful statute referred to as the dangerousness statute. And for those of you that may be a little unfamiliar, those charged with trafficking, those are your business dealers in the trade, so to speak. Those are the ones that are pushing the poison for profit. Having been in private practice for about 20 years before getting this job and representing many folks that were charged with trafficking, I was certainly well aware that they knew eventually they would wind up getting charged and being part of the system. And they would save up for that proverbial rainy day, if you will, for their bail money. And then they would post their bail, and more often than not, they'd go out and continue applying their trade. Under the dangerousness statute, you are held from jump. You don't have that ability to go back to work, if you will. So it's kind of interesting now. We have some data from 2023 and 2024. Just try to get a sense if this is making an impact. And the data has revealed 2023 numbers that non-fatal overdoses were down 10% and fatal overdoses were down 7%, which, you know, is certainly encouraging. 2024 numbers came out. 2024, non-fatal overdoses were down 25% from 2023, and fatal overdoses were down 35% from 2023. Now, I definitely have to recognize the wider availability of Narcan, and that is certainly a good thing. But I think you can also draw a reasonable inference that this hard-line policy of holding these fentanyl traffickers from jump is having a positive impact. Wanted to talk a little bit about a particular grant that we received recently, a privately funded grant. Some of you may know Cape Cod Healthcare recently opened a new addition or new building on their campus, they refer to as the Tower, and it's for cancer treatment. Last summer, early last summer, I learned that to get the permits to put that building up and provide those services, Cape Cod Healthcare was required to make an investment in various stakeholders in the district that they were serving. So I went back to my team, tried to say, "Hey, how can we possibly get some grant funds that may be available?" What came to mind is something referred to as SIMS, or Critical Incident Management Systems. What that is, and some of you may be familiar with it, is that whenever law enforcement responds to an overdose situation, the officer is to go back to the station and put the relevant information into this SIMS database. I'll give you a brief example, and I'm not picking on any towns here. If someone from Hanover went down to Hyannis and had an overdose experience, the Barnstable Police Office goes back to the station, puts that relevant information in, and the service providers from the Hanover area where this person came from would be notified immediately. We took a little bit of a look at the SIMS across the Cape. Born is a member of the SIMS program, just so everyone knows. And we saw various rooms for potential growth and development of the present SIMS database. And I'm going to speak to that in a minute in two specific areas. So we put together, started working on a little bit of a proposal. It got interesting, because this is literally the story that happened. I'm at my local pub one night. I happen to live in the same area as the Chief Executive Officer, Michael Lauf, of Cape Cod Healthcare. We bump into each other, and it's the classic taking some notes, me taking some notes on a napkin of what he's telling me. So I take these notes back to my team. Next thing you know, you have a 10-page, single-spaced proposal. We submit it. We had about a half dozen meetings with the executives of Cape Cod Healthcare. They brought in the Department of Public Health. We had multiple meetings with the Department of Public Health. And after about a nine-month process, they awarded us $1 million to help build out this database system known as SIMS. And the two areas that we're looking to expand it, one is where it's provided. Right now, 14 out of the 15 police departments on the Cape utilize SIMS. Again, Born does use it. I'm going to let your minds wander as to what is the sole town that does not participate, and we can maybe have that conversation off-camera later on. But then we also want to expand it to Martha's Vineyard. Of course, that's part of my district, where I have six police departments, as well as Nantucket. But we're also looking at the database itself, and we see room for growth. We see an opportunity to perhaps include interpretive services. We see an opportunity perhaps for housing services. And we see an opportunity perhaps for wellness services. So this is, again, something I'm very much looking forward to, coming back before you next year to talk about the potential growth that we've engaged in in the past year. The last topic I want to talk about is in the area of elder fraud. Every single month, detectives across the Cape meet in Howard's PD to go over their cases. I try to get to those meetings as often as possible. And for the most part, for, you know, almost two years or so, what I would often hear is B and E into cars. People sit stealing the quick cash out of cars, often including change, from seasonal homes, from vacant homes, things like that. And then it was last summer, you started to notice more departments talking about elder fraud. And then ultimately, it was all the departments going around the table, elder fraud, elder fraud, elder fraud. So last fall, I asked for some data. I asked for 2023 numbers and year-to-date 2024. This is October of last year. I happen to know the Barnstable numbers off the top of my head. In that timeframe, Barnstable had 393 calls for elder fraud cases. Of that, they had the resources to put together a report in 253 cases. Of that, they had the ability to only charge in 15 cases, or roughly 5%. So obviously, they're overwhelmed with the caseload they had. So again, going back to the team, try to see what we could possibly do to help them out. We came up with a proposal to go to the legislature to ask for additional funding. The grand total, I think, was somewhere around $580,000 or so. And what it included was for our office to hire two forensic examiners. We're thinking of CPAs that are kind of in the tail end of their career. They made their money in private practice, and now they want to engage in some public service. Two more prosecutors and two victim witness assistants. And again, that grand total is about $580,000. We've now gone, begun to go around to gather some support for this particular proposal. I've had 21 of my 22 police chiefs sign off on a letter of support. The 22nd chief is on it on leave right now. So far to date, I have 10 councils of an aging across the district sign off a letter of support. I've met personally with the executives from Cape Cod Five. They've already signed their letter of support. I've met with the folks at Cape Cod Cooperative, and I'm about to meet with the folks. And I've also met with the folks from Martha's Vineyard Bank. Both of them said they'll sign off. And I'm going to be meeting with Siemens Bank within the next couple of weeks. We also have towns participating. Doing this, what I'm doing right now, I've done, or I am doing this year across the district. I did it last year and in year one as well. And the town of Barnstable is signing off on a letter, the town of Yarmouth, the town of Falmouth, the town of Brewster, Barnstable County Commissioners, and Dukes County Commissioners. And I would toss it out to this board. If you had any interest in supporting us, I'd greatly appreciate it. Our effort so far is gathering some more attention. Channel 5 has picked up on it, and they're indicating that should we have some sort of summit that we're talking about hosting in the, in the fall with elected officials from all across the district coming together with our law enforcement partners to try to convince the powers that be in Boston that, "Hey, this is really worthy here." I'm going to use kind of a powerful term, but it's actually rampant, this elder fraud across the entire district. So we appreciate Channel 5 giving some consideration and helping us promote some exposure to the issue down here. That's it. That's my pitch. It's getting kind of late. I know you have a heck of an agenda left, but I certainly stood in prepared to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone?
Just thanks for all you do, Rob. I know you've been doing everything you can, and you're doing great work down there. My biggest thing is people, children and adults who are in the autism spectrum who are getting abused, you know, assaulted. And in the past, in other counties, you've seen zero, you know, people just getting away with it, you know, with a slap on the wrist. I mean, most of these people, all these kids that are on the autism or spectrum or have sort of mental health issue are pretty gentle, you know, they don't mean any harm. And then to have someone go attack, you know, one of them as he's walking through a stop and shop down in Mashpee, I mean, it's just uncalled for. And I just hope that, I know, and we're not going to talk about specific cases, but we can't. But I just hope that there's some, there's some toler, you know, tolerance, not tolerance, but some, an advocate to make sure that we protect the most vulnerable.
I will speak about a specific case that you're talking about right now. And as I think, I know, I think you know, Peter, we indicted that individual.
Yep.
No.
I'm just going to say very quickly, I know we're running on time. I mean, I think I'm super excited about hearing about the CERT program. I want to learn more about that. I'm not embarrassed to say I have a very personal reason why that program is necessary. It's overdue by about 10 years for my family. But that's awesome to know, because those, so many of these abuse victims fall through the cracks because of the lack of services. And, you know, not all abuse victims are, are women either. That's important to note. Another personal experience that I'm not embarrassed to speak about. So thank you. Like, and the elder work you're doing is amazing. I was raised by an elder, so that's my baby too. So thank you, yeah. Just, it's awesome to hear all of the work. And I thank you all for coming out on a, you know, Tuesday night. I'm sure you have plenty of emails to answer and all of that, like, I know we all do. So thank you, yeah. Anything, last comments?
Steve Zara's just messaged me. He apologized for not being here. He says he's available on the 17th, even if he has to come in on the public comment and just say something. He has an obligation at Cape Cod Community College this evening that he couldn't get out of.
Okay. That's wonderful. Thank you, Peter. And we will make note for that, and hopefully we can see him on the 17th. Go ahead.
I just want to say, I think it's really great that you're working on the elder abuse.
Thank you.
I'm elderly, actually. And I have to say, the number of phone calls that my husband and I receive every single day, saying, "Oh, we can get you this free stuff for this from Medicare." And, I mean, it is, and, you know, I just hang up on them, and I won't say, "Yeah." it is, and, you know, I just hang up on them, and I won't say yes, I'm this person, because you never want to say yes, or they've got you recorded. So I think it's really important that this happens and that we get on top of it, because it's a big issue for the elders.
Appreciate the support very much.
I do have one comment, though.
Yeah, please do.
Relative to, like, the elder fraud. Have you reached out to the Cape Cod Consumer Assistance Council, our local chapter? They do several workshops.
Okay.
Especially surrounding elder fraud, and try to reach out to different communities and provide workshops specific to engaging elderly and that focus on recognizing and red flags.
You'll hear from Daniel Whitney in the morning.
Great, great. I'm a trustee, so.
Okay, all right. That call will be made.
And just to toot our horn, the Cape chapter has closed more cases than any other chapter in the state of Massachusetts.
Nice.
They're a busy group. They're a busy group. They're a good group, so, a lot of...
indispensable when we have a triad.
I see Gene. I don't want to forget Gene. If he might have something, I'm not sure.
But they have had some focus.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate everyone coming and updating us.
Thank you. Have a good night, everybody. Good luck with the rest of the meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Okay. We've got quite a bit to go here. Appointment of Select Board Representatives and Liaisons. Okay, so this is my, again, my only, my second meeting as chair, so you may have to refresh my memory on how we vote these in. We don't pick them all, obviously, we don't go over them all individually, I would imagine, at this time, or how would you suggest we do this?
If I may interject, Madam Chair, if you look at page six, this agenda item is specific to the Select Board Representatives, so this one you go, this is for the board members.
Selectmen committee to be renewed for FY twenty-six, okay?
What we've done in the past is if we ask the people who are serving on their existing committees if they wish to stay on there.
Stay on there, all right.
And then gets worked down the list from there.
Why don't I start right at the top, then? So, of course, we have the...
So, before we do that, though, can I just say that all the thing, there's a lot of blank things that are things that are the chair? So the chair of the Board of Selectmen has several things that are added to their plate?
Yep, I understand. You have the ex officio, the three positions, yep.
Okay, so I just, I want to say that I found that for myself, that the things that I was doing, I think I dropped something last year, because being able to do everything you're doing and, yeah, so...
Yeah, thank you, MJ. I do appreciate that. I did, Marlene did inform me that there are some ex officio positions that are mandatory, the chair, so I did want to talk about possibly stepping off some of my other committees, because I do have quite a few with those three added. So I do hope some folks might want to take a couple off my plate, just so I can be at all of them.
And some of them aren't that heavy a lift. Like, the OPAB doesn't, meets maybe once or twice. The NI Grant is like once.
Annually, yep.
Bourne Veterans Memorial Community Center.
That's a monthly meeting.
Yep.
That's a monthly meeting on, usually, it's the third Thursday, yeah.
Yeah, we went over those already, so I'm very familiar with those, so I'm okay.
So now we'll go through. Okay.
Yeah, we don't have to. I've already, we've already talked about those, just so that I was on board as well, and I knew. All right, so I am going to, let me go back to my list. All right, I'm going to start at the top. So we have a one-year term, Select Board Town, okay, June thirtieth, for the Affordable Housing Trust. Peter Meyer is the current committee person. Are you willing to stay with that, Peter?
Yes.
Okay. So I just move on down the list, is that what we do, how we do this? All right, we have another Select Board term. It's Select Board Liaison for the Bourne Cable Internet and Telecommunications Advisory Committee. We have Anne Marie Serunian, is she still willing, Anne Marie?
Sure.
All right. This is the Selectment/Town Administrator. It's the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund Management Board. And Mary Jane Misrangelo is the current chair of that.
I'm not the chair, I'm...
Current, sorry, the representative.
Yeah, I'm the representative, and, yeah, it's a three-year term, and, yeah, I'd like to continue on that.
All right. The next one is the Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority. There is no person in there currently.
I'm interested in that, because I'm also president of the MBTA's Advisory Representative, and I'm also doing the bridge advisory as well as for Mass Municipal Association. I'm on the Public Works in Transportation, so my expertise is transportation. But I'm also, but if I do pick up the CCR TA, I'll be willing to give up the Integrated Solid Waste Management Building Committee to someone else.
All right, so, any opposed to Peter jumping onto the community action, I mean, I'm sorry, the Cape, the...
Regional Transit.
Regional Transit Authority.
So that's one of the ones, it's Select Board Chair or designated.
Or a designated, and I'm fine with you taking that.
Thank you.
Okay. Community Action Committee of Cape Cod and the Islands. So this is one of those committees that I've tried to get through to. I know George spoke to them when I called. They're like, we don't have any room on our board, we're not interested. But I was trying to explain that we're liaison, so I'm not sure if there's someone else that might want to take that committee and try to reach them. I wasn't sure, I know Gene doesn't have very, there wasn't many available when Gene was elected, so I don't know if Gene might be willing to take on that.
Sure, I will.
The Cape Cod Community Action Committee, yeah?
Yeah.
All right, all right, perfect. All right, and then we have Community Engagement Committee, that's Anne Marie Serunian. All right, she's still going for that. Select Board Rep, this one is the EMC Community Advisory Council, Andrew G. Campbell, is he staying?
Well, it says suspended or revoked, so he looks like he's...
Oh, is he suspended or, oh, I see.
So he's in there unless we remove him.
Okay, what is it, what is your pleasure on that? How do we handle that one?
I think he thinks he's already there.
He's been there, or...
Yeah, can we ask him to make a, come to us and do a report?
We could.
I mean, I don't think we've ever had him come.
All right, so why don't we do that on Andrew and find out, and we can always remove him or reappoint him at another meeting, correct?
Right.
Okay, so Andrew Campbell.
We can appoint him, but ask him to come in.
Come back in, okay. So Andrew Campbell, apparently he's still there. So Select Board Member for this one, and this is until project is completed or until revoked. Integrated Solid Waste Management Office and Maintenance Garage Building Committee, Peter Meyer.
I'm willing to stay if they will, and if no one else wants it. I mean, it's a great committee, they're very passionate of what they're doing. We've slowed down a little bit in order to make it, make sure that we do everything diligently, and because of the fact that we slowed down and decided not to go forward to October's town meeting on the building, or the project, I think it's going to be a better project when we go to town meeting, because we will be doing things in more detail. And the members, the members as a whole, Catherine Walton, Greg Serunian, Nolan, and others, have been very diligent in their responses and doing their work and making import when they do, so it's a very well-oiled machine.
Okay. So Peter's staying. I don't hear anyone saying you'd like to take that one?
No, but can you ask them if they would be willing to have that, those meetings filmed by Bourne Community TV?
Yeah.
Because I really like building committees, especially to be filmed, so that people can watch on their own time and not have to attend the meeting, or, yeah. I would appreciate that.
All right, moving on. So Joint Base Cape Cod, so I've been on this now for two years. I, you know, I do enjoy getting on that. Gene is the alternate, but I didn't know if Gene might be interested in actually being the main person, and maybe I could go for the alternate, or maybe somebody else might want to do alternate.
I'd do alternate.
So Anne Marie said she'd be...
I'd do alternate if she would do, if Gene would do...
Which, who do we think? Okay, so we've got, it's up to Gene, though, so I don't even know if Gene wants it, so maybe Anne Marie might be the person, and then Gene, and then MemJ alternate if Gene doesn't want to take that one. So they meet at seven-thirty in the morning on first, the first Thursday of every month, and then there's the MC Three meetings, which, you know, the only reason I really, it's just, I have a conflict every time that meeting happens, so I haven't been able to go, so I really feel like somebody else could do a little bit better job with the MC Three only because of my availability.
That's fine. Are those, that was one of the ones that I tipped, I wasn't getting all the emails about the meetings, all the updates. Are those in person only?
No, no, they're virtual for us, because it's seven-thirty in the morning. The base, of course, all of the base representatives are out there in person, and you can go in person at seven-thirty in the morning, but I'm generally with my coffee and my sleepy eyes and just waking up, right? So, but, yeah, they're great, it's a great group, and it's not very long. You just give an update about what's going on in town, and they go around, they do like a round circle. It takes about twenty minutes, half hour.
Okay, yeah, I'll do that.
All right, all right. So did you, now we have to decide between Anne Marie and MJ.
What are the two things? There's...
MC Three and JBCC.
There's the Joint Base Cape Cod meeting, that's the first Tuesday of every, Thursday of every month, at seven-thirty AM, right on the button.
Right.
And then the MC Three meeting, I think, is the third week, I don't, I forget, but it's different sometimes, and that's usually at like five-thirty at night, and that's always in person, I do believe. They don't generally have a virtual for that. And that's the one I really feel like we need more representative at, because it was bummed out that it was on the same night as, I have another conflict, so. So, yeah, we have to kind of talk now about who, Anne Marie or MJ for the alternate? Who do, who would we, who would rather, or how do we want to figure that out? Do we want to vote on it? What do we want to do? Should we vote on it, or are we just...
If Anne Marie wants to do what she can do it.
All right, so Anne Marie's...
It's an alternate.
Yeah, yeah, that's if Gene can't be available.
Right.
And I'd probably, and maybe if she couldn't go to one, you could go to the other two. All right. Okay, so MJ was fine with Anne Marie being, becoming the alternate for the Joint Base Cape Cod. Thank you very much, everyone, on that. Go ahead, please. Can you come to the mic if you could? Sorry.
This is John York. I just want to say, the MP Three meetings are, to my mind, very important.
Yes.
It's a long range, it tends to be kind of a big picture, things that might or might not happen, looking out to the future, but the things that they're talking about happening in the future would have significant, both positive and negative, possibly impacts on our town, and having a voice and a representation there just to keep the rest of you and the rest of us informed, and also to speak for our town when necessary. I think there's a lot of long-range planning that's going on there that our town should be part of, so I think that's great to have that representation. Thanks.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, John. I agree, you know, I always felt bad that I couldn't be at those, and I know they always do an update each month at the JBCC meeting, but I always think that, I feel very strongly it would be better to have someone that can be there, so thank you, I appreciate that.
Can I ask you a question about this? Does it have to be the same person?
To what?
For the JBCC and the MC Three?
I don't know, I don't necessarily think so. I think that if...
I think they're two different, they used to be listed as three different things, right?
Well, yeah, so if somebody, you know, I generally, I'm always at the Joint Base Cape Cod meeting, I don't think I missed one, I think, since they started it in the last two years. But the MC Three meeting was never worked, so maybe that could be something, you know, they could stagger or try to, one could go if the other one couldn't, that's what the alternate's for, right?
Or maybe we could have, like, different people do the alternate.
Yeah.
It's fine.
Yeah.
All right.
All right.
But with this, this, I think we should list them as two separate committees, the Joint Base Cape Cod Committee and the MC Three Committee.
I don't know how that works. I think they're the same, I think we've always had it as a sort of one thing, because I think that the appointment is the Joint Base Cape Cod, and I think they...
It's like a subcommittee?
That's what I'm asking, it doesn't have to be the same person.
The MC Three is like a subcommittee of that, I think, right? I don't know, what do you think, Marlene? I'll ask you.
I believe, I believe in the past, there's only been one appointment.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. All right, thank you there.
Could you just change the list to be Joint Base Cape Cod and MC Three?
Slash, yeah, we could put it on there, maybe.
So that, that's what it's listed as, including both things?
Yeah, and I think that's where I got confused, too, in the beginning, because I thought the only meeting was the JBCC, and then I figured out the MC Three meetings were sort of a good one to be at, and then, yeah. So that's...
MC Three was a combination, I think, of like, two different things, historically. There used to be more committees, and then they put it into the MC Three, which used to be, yeah.
Perfect. Okay, moving on. So Local Emergency Planning Committee, I'm fine, I'd like to stay on that. That one's not too strenuous, and I do like that committee, and I wouldn't mind staying on the Mass Maritime Liaison unless somebody's very interested in taking that. I think I've worked very well with Alan Metcalf and the meetings, and Marlene goes every month, but if somebody else is really adamant and really interested in that, I wouldn't, I would certainly give someone else a chance if they thought that that would be something they'd be interested in doing.
I might be interested in doing that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that. I think it's a nice change, too, to switch the Select Board out and have them be able to talk. I'm fine with that, if you're, if you are.
Yeah.
All right. MJ, Mary Jane Misrangelo, and Maris Maritime Liaison. Okay, so we're down to the Mass DOT Bridge Advisory Committee. Currently, Peter and Anne Marie are on that, and I think they've both done well.
Yeah, I was just saying.
You good with that, Joe?
Sure.
All right, that sounds good. We've got you both there. MBTA Advisory Board, Peter, you good there? Yep?
Yep.
Okay, Peter's staying there.
So on that, that is the chair of the Select Board.
Unless you designate...
Unless you designate someone else, but it's, you're going to have to, Melissa, write something to them, that's what I had to do last year. I have, you have to write and say that Peter's the designated representative. They need to hear it from the chair.
Yeah, Brian Kane.
And you've been on that a long time.
Yeah, Brian Kane will reach, will reach out.
Okay, all right, so maybe, Marlene, we can connect and try to get something to them. Thank you on that. Okay, I'm fine with that. Okay, so Select Board Policy Subcommittee is Mary Jane and Anne Marie. You both still interested in that, or, okay, sounds good.
Yep.
So Side Fire Station Committee is Gene. You still good on that, Gene?
Yes, I am.
Oh, perfect, love it, okay. And I already know the OPAB, the Select Board Trustee for the Veterans Memorial Center, and the NI Grant Trustee Committee is mine ex officio. It's really ironic, the NI thing and all, seeing as my husband's a NI, so, let's see, trustees, Bourne, that's me, okay, where did I miss? Okay, Wastewater Advisory Committee. Are we discussing that, or are we just voting that now? So that would be Mary Jane, you still interested?
Yep, we're saying that.
Are we keeping that committee?
I know, I was wondering that.
I, well, we should.
Last year, we talked about dissolving it.
We talked about dissolving it, right, so that was what I was wondering. That was going to be my question, but I wasn't sure if that's something we talk about here That was going to be my question, but I wasn't sure if that's something we talk about here or after. Now or after?
Well, it was set to advise the Select Board on the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan. And so while we're still working on the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan-
But we're getting a final report on it.
Do you have any thoughts on that, um, Town Administrator?
It's up to you. You did discuss dissolving this last year, so, um-
With the work we got, we're going to have to do so closely on the CWMP as a board. I don't know, do we feel that it's-
Well, I think, yeah, I think the work has shifted now for the full, for us, almost like what we did, you know, almost like the same format we had when we did the marijuana.
Right.
So my suggestion would be that you appoint and then, because you have other appointments to make. And then if you want to have an agenda in the future to disband the committee, that that would disband the committee.
We could have an agenda on the seventeenth, maybe we could add it, I guess. Do you think would be a good idea? All right. So why don't we do the appointment for now? So Wastewater Advisory Committee will point, um, Mary Jane. And then we can have a future agenda item to discuss whether or not it's necessary with our plans after we discuss our CWMP progress and all that. All right. And then we have the TA's Advisory Committee on Pedestrian Bicycle Pathway. And that's Mary Jane. You still good there?
I, I'm still good there, unless someone else wants to do it.
And that's it on our Select Committees.
Make a motion to, um, to ratify the Select Board appointments to their various committees.
All right.
Or a fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
Yep.
Or unless otherwise stated. Some of them between here.
All right.
Second.
We have a, um, a motion from Peter. A second from Anne Marie. On, uh, I'm going to, I'm going to do roll call if that's okay.
You have to, you have to.
You have to, Jean's on the line.
Yes, because Jean's online anyhow. But I think I might practice that more often. But, okay, so, um, Anne Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa, yes. Five, zero, zero. And no, no opposed, no abstain. So, so pass, five, zero, zero. Okay. Excellent. Moving on. So, um, we have a tentative Select Board Retreat Date. We did meet and discuss like what might be available. And I think a date that we came up with for the retreat is a little early. We're trying to get that done because we really do have a lot to talk about in the next, um, in the next few months. And we have a lot of critical issues on our plate for this town. So we're trying to get it up there. Is July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five? Does that seem like it would work for the rest of the board?
At Mass Maritime, where we know we go? Yeah.
Yes, and I have confirmed that the space is available that day.
And what's the time?
Uh, it would be eight, nine AM.
Nine thirty to three thirty.
Nine thirty to three thirty.
What, you want ten?
No, I want to go the other way.
You want to go eight?
I'd, 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 three thirty to come out on a Friday afternoon in a summer change of-
Do like nine to three then? Eight thirty might be a little-
I'd like it to be done by like two, two thirty.
Can we do nine to two thirty?
How about eight thirty?
It's early. I don't know if I can get, if I have bus ride, if I have like them all the gate. I just don't want to be running late as Chair and have you all sitting there waiting for me. Because I can try to get there by eight thirty.
So nine, nine to two thirty? Well, we, we can be there at eight thirty and then as soon as you get there, we start.
I mean, we can set the end date, I mean, excuse me, the end time at two.
Yeah, let's just set the end time at two. Nine to two.
We can do two thirty. If we're going to start late, we could do two thirty. I just think three thirty, by the time you get through the Rotary, I, I-
I think nine to two might be okay. Marlene, I think that's what we did last time, nine to two. I don't think we stayed till three thirty or four. It was nine to two. We had plenty of time.
Five hours is plenty, you know, really.
Sure. All right, nine to two on July twenty-fifth. That's confirmed. Do we need to vote that or no?
Please.
Okay. So do we have a motion to accept the tentative Select Board Retreat Date on Friday, July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five?
So move.
From nine to two.
All right.
I think I heard it from Jean.
Uh, oh, you got Jean. All right, hold on one sec. All right, so we have, um, so this is for the, sorry, I'm writing my votes here, Retreat. And so we have a motion from Peter.
Yep.
Second by Jean. All right, roll call vote. Here we go. Anne Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa, yes. Uh, no, no opposed, any abstained? Hearing none? So move, five, zero. Motion passes, five, zero.
Yeah.
Okay. Feeling accomplished.
Okay.
So rescheduling the next Select Board meeting by one week from June tenth to June seventeenth. So we're only doing this for, for a reason. So at the prior meeting, we set this, um, there was a motion that was made by the Select Board. And we set the date for the meeting, the next meeting for, um, June tenth. It was my first meeting as Chair, so forgive me. I wasn't, um, my mind wasn't quite right. And what I realized, and I know we had talked about it the prior evening, is that I am away on business that week. And it's something I could not cancel. I'm not on vacation leaving y'all to go have a blast, wish I was. But, um, I just really feel that these discussions are critical. And especially myself as the new Chair, I really want to be here. And it also allows the administration to give one more week to get this information together that we need. Because it's not, it's not easy. And I really think it's important to give them enough time as well. It's mainly because of me that I am not going to be here and I really want to. So, um, we were hoping to maybe get the vote back on the table to change the date to June seventeenth for our next meeting. So I am asking if somebody would be willing to make a motion to, um-
Make a motion to, um, change, um, the meeting date from June tenth to June seventeenth. And that the, um, pre-application schedule for the NOI will be presented to the Select Board for review on the June seventeenth.
Second.
Meeting with the goal of filing by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
The same, yeah.
Yeah, same motion, just for a different date.
It's not going to change the goal. And people were concerned that it would change the deadline.
Yeah, and I think it's important to stress that the, that, yeah. I think it's important to stress that it's important to have all five of us here in this.
And that was really the only reason. There was nothing's changed. It's just a reschedule.
The work, the work is still going to get done.
Yes, absolutely.
But I also think that, um, if we are going to do that, and it looks like we are, the next item, like, item ten should also be continued to the meeting of, of June of six seventeen. Because I think they, could they-
So let me, thank you.
Well, we haven't even-
All right, let me take the motion for the, um, let's get the vote for the date change.
We need a second.
Reschedule to, of the meeting to June seventeenth with the-
Peter seconded it.
Oh, he did it here, I'm sorry.
Um, for a date.
With the pre-
All right.
Application schedule to be presented on the seventeenth.
Okay, so we have a motion from MJ. Second from Peter. All right, so I'm going to do the roll call. Anne Marie?
Yes.
Uh, Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa, yes. Any further discussion? All right, imposed and abstained. Hearing none. The motion passes. Five, zero, zero unanimous. Thank you, everyone, for understanding. And thank you for the residents for understanding that as well. I appreciate that very, very much, allowing me to be here. Okay. Uh, so moving on to this next one. So, um, as Peter just made a recommendation, so continuing, continue developing the CWMP. So what is, what's your recommendation, Peter, on that? Let's just talk about that a little bit first?
Well, I'm sure we can talk about it first, but I think, I think especially B, um, should be discussed on, in more detail on the seventeenth, on the seventeenth.
So you think we should table the next three, three items for the seventeenth?
I, I think so. I could be wrong, though. I don't know what the rest of the board is.
I think it's a long discussion.
Yeah, it's a long discussion.
I think, I mean, I have like, I have like two pages of notes. I have like, especially since based on what Helen said, that she's willing to do some work on edits to the, to the draft. What I'd like people to think about is the difference between a draft CWMP and a final recommended plan to be presented to town meeting. And I think there's work that Apex can do in terms of edits to the CWMP, edits to the CWMP based on comments that we're not going to pay for because she said she, she'll, willing to do those responses. But then talk about as a second step, what we need to do to have a plan ready for town meeting. So, um, I think would be good to wait and talk about next week. Or the seventeenth.
Her words were, she was willing to commit to producing a final report.
Yes.
Right?
She didn't make change. I don't think she said edits.
I think that was-
She did say, she said, she said, I will make the edits-
No, she, she did say yes. She said, she asked us what we wanted in that final report. And she's committed to, to doing that, to completing based on what we tell her we want in it. That's what she said.
And I think the biggest thing is the responses, the draft responses to the comments. She said, we need to look at those and make sure that we agree with those responses. They're not her responses. Those are our responses. And it, that's going to take some discussion. So, um, I, I think there's discussion on this before we accept it as a final draft.
Well, we have to, yeah, A, B, and C.
Yep.
If, if it's a more robust, then perhaps it should be at a meeting where we don't have a packed agenda.
Sure.
Yeah.
Um, any thoughts from the Town Administrator?
I do encourage the board members to think about if you want to continue with a CWMP or if you want to only proceed with watershed level plans. That is a, that will make a huge difference. And if you don't want to continue with the CWMP, I wouldn't suggest devoting any additional effort into that and focusing your effort on watershed plans. So I think you need to determine what it is you want to do first before you dive straight into the details.
Got you.
Okay.
Thank you, Marlene. I wanted to make sure I asked that question. Okay, so I'm going to, I'm searching, um, in need of a motion to table number ten, A, B, and C until we're able to discuss some of the rest of our watershed, um, situation.
And, on the, being of the June-
On the meeting on June seventeenth, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so move.
All right, so we have a motion from Peter. Second from MJ. All right, roll call vote. Anne Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa, yes.
Five, zero, zero.
Five, zero, zero. Thank you, all right. So, um, so this next one is a discussion on the draft charge for a Charter Review Committee. It is in our packet. I did review it. I'm sure the board has as well. And I will probably, am I handing that to you, Marlene? Or how do we, what are we doing with this one?
So I would like the, the board to either make any changes or vote the draft as it is. As far as the application process goes, I would suggest that you set a deadline of July ninth for letters of interest or talent bank forms. And then you would have discussion, interviews, and seat the committee on July fifteenth.
Okay, all right.
The only thing that is not in here that the board needs to determine is how many people you want on the committee.
Okay, and that's some part of the vote? Would that be part of our motion? Okay, does somebody have a motion for this one? I read it. I mean, are any like thoughts on it? Yeah, I guess.
Can we talk about the people and-
It's seven.
The charge should say they're, um, residents or voters in the town of Born. They, they need to be voters and residents of the town, just serve on the committee. And if it doesn't say that, um-
Yeah, I like that idea. I did find a-
I don't remember how many people, how many people were on your seven?
Seven last time, yeah. We thought that nine was going to be too big.
It was too big.
Yeah.
Seven, seven was a good mix. We always were able to have a forum.
Yeah, I think seven is, seven is good. And then seven registered voters of the town.
Okay, and then I did notice section eight, one, there's a typo. Home Rule Charter, it says chatter, just so we, just so you know. It's just not a big deal, but it was just a Scribner's error or something.
Oh, thank you.
So, so do we want to vote this as is? Or what's, what's the pleasure of the board?
Well, most, most of the approved draft charges written dated June third, twenty twenty-five with the edits suggested. And as part of this approval, uh, we ask for applicants, people of interest to have letters into the Town Administrator's office by July ninth, twenty twenty-five.
And be a town resident?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
The motion includes their seven registered voters. They added that their seven registered voters on the town.
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, hearing none. Uh, roll call. Anne Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa, yes. Uh, none opposed, none abstained, stand opposed, nope, all in favor, five, zero, zero. Passes, okay. All right, we're getting there. Okay, uh, so licensing and events. We are going through these individually, I'm assuming, to vote them?
The fir-, yeah, A one, A two, and A three are individual.
Okay, so we have three licenses here. We have one for a common vic license for Taste and Tide Restaurant, which will be located at eighteen Beach Street. I'm really excited about that because I'm on that side a lot. Annual Common Vic License for Submarines LLC, two eighty-two Main Street. And then a new common vigilance license for Perk Time LLC DBA, The Local Grounds Coffee House and Cafe, thirteen seventy Route twenty-eight A, Kattaman.
So we have to do them separately?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So-
Is anyone here?
Do we have any, I don't know.
No. Kevin's for the next one.
Nine o'clock, everybody quit on us.
Motion to approve the annual common vic license for Taste and Tide located at eighteen B Street contingent on successful completion and passing of all final required inspections.
Second.
All right.
Menu looks good.
Yeah.
So.
All right, so we have a motion from Peter, a second from MJ for Taste, uh, for Taste and Tide. Any further discussion? All right, roll call. Anne Marie?
Yes.
Uh, Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa, yes. None, stand opposed, uh, five, zero, zero. Passes the five, zero, zero. All right, so we have, um, Submarines LLC.
Kevin Scanell.
Yeah, it's, it's nice. This is where the old Subway restaurant is in, over in the-
Oh, the Honeydew Donuts?
He's here.
Oh, hi, sir. Please, go, go ahead, state your name and your village and, um, speak to your license. Thank you.
Hi there, my name's Kevin Scanell. And, yeah, I'm very excited about the space. So it used to be a Subway, um, which is located in the St. Bell Station, um, right in Buzzards Bay, right by the Rotary. And, um, I wanted to open up a place that, that, you know, has subs, salads, and soups, and, um, you know, serves the community year-round. And, um, yeah, if you guys have any further questions, I'm happy to answer them for you.
Yeah, thank you so much. It's good to see that app opening back up. I really missed that once it, it left. Yeah, thank you so much. It's good to see that back, opening back up. I really missed that once it, it left, so, uh, that's great to hear. Um, all right, any questions from the board and from Mr. Scanell?
No, I'll make a motion to approve the annual common vic license for Submarines LLC located at two eighty-two Main Street, contingent upon the completion of the business certificate and, uh, successful completion and passing of all final required inspections.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from MJ, a second from Ann Marie. Any further discussion?
It's, um, no, it's great cause, cause that side of the building's been empty for a while, so it's nice to get some activity over there. And by having that business in there, and, you know, I've, bring a great service, but it's also a good, a good safety feature because now, you know, it has more activity in the building, so, uh, thank you, Kevin, for, I, I've seen you and your wife are working in there already when I go to coffee, so I appreciate it very much.
All right, perfect. Uh, roll call vote. Ann Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa, yes. Uh, any, no opposed, abstained, five zero zero.
All right, good luck.
Good luck, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have one more on the,
Thank you.
All right, we'll be there.
Evening. Uh, Perk Time LLC, DBA, Local Grounds Coffee House and Cafe, we like.
I'll make a motion to approve the annual common vic license for Perk Time LLC, DBA, The Local Grounds Coffee House and Cafe, located at thirteen seventy, Route twenty-eight A, contingent upon the completion of the business certificate, the successful completion and passing of all final required inspections.
All right.
Second.
Second, a motion from MJ, second from Ann Marie. All right, roll call vote. Any further discussion?
Uh, I just wanna say this is where the Daily Brew was before they moved to the Silver Lounge.
I know, I saw that. I was excited. I was like, oh, that was quick. Somebody filled that bulletin quick.
Whatever.
They, uh, they used to be the, um, own, they used to be owners of Talk of the Town, too.
Talk of the Town, that's right.
That's who's going in there.
These people?
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
Yeah. All right, uh, roll call. Ann Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yeah.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa, yes. Five zero zero. All righty. So we're moving on to consideration of the events. We have one on this agenda, so we have Alice Moore, use of Buzzers Bay Park for a suicide bullying awareness walk in memory of Navea Jade Perdis on August sixteenth, twenty twenty five, rain date nine, six, twenty-five.
Um, the only thing I have on this is I know what they're saying, if any tents over ten by ten will require a permit. I just wanna make sure that no stakes go on the ground, uh, because I've seen some, some people who have done, done events, they have recently used stakes, you know, and I didn't, I guess, I guess keep a mental notice to myself, but, uh, uh, I don't, I don't approach them, but just, just to reiterate that no, no stakes in the ground when they do this stuff.
Can you give me those dates?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, do we have a motion?
So motion to approve the suicide bullying awareness walk in memory of Navea Jade Perdis on a, August sixteenth, twenty twenty five, with a rain date of September sixth, twenty twenty five, from eleven thirty to two thirty. Well, setup is nine thirty, take down story, so.
All right, we have a motion from Ann Marie. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Peter Meyer? Any further discussion? All right, uh, roll call vote. Ann Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa, yes. Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Motion passes, carries. Okay. So we're moving on to the consent agenda, and these we all do at once. I can read them off very quickly. We've got quite a few on here. We are getting past our time. Uh, so we have A, SGG Matthew, A, Puccino Foundation, LTD, use of town roads for annual blackbeard's ride. We're very familiar with that one. That's a wonderful effort.
So happy this is on the consent agenda. Yay!
Born on the Fourth of July Parade. We all know we love that, too. Use of the town roads for the parade route, parking bands, placement of the banner across Main Street, permission to sell T-shirts along the route. Uh, number, um, C, Bourne High School, class of twenty twenty-eight, use of fire station for a car wash on September thirteenth, rain date September fourteenth. Bourne Rec Department, use of Buzzers Bay Park for Family Paint Night, June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty five. Saint Margaret's Church, E, procession around the church, one forty-one Main, for the Feast of Corpus Christi on June twenty-second, twenty twenty five. F, Saint Margaret's Church, one day liquor license for concert event, June, June twenty-first. G, Cape Cod Regional Chamber of Commerce, annual canal day, woo, woo, September twentieth, twenty twenty five, rain date nine, twenty-one, twenty twenty five. Use of Buzzers Bay Park, placement of banner, one day entertainment license, two to three bands performing live music throughout the event. H, approve the appointment of committee members for FY twenty-six list attached. Um, appoint Olivia Berry and Thomas Sullivan as community service officers, term ending August thirtieth, twenty twenty five. J, declare pump out boat surplus. K, declare scuba dive, lift bag no longer in use by fire department surplus. Uh, L, accept fifty dollar donation for the library from the Rambler family. M, accept thousand dollar donation to the fire department from the Cape Cod Enterprises. And final and last but not least, set the date for fall town meeting as October twenty, twenty twenty five. Open the special town meeting warrant on Wednesday, June fifth, at nine AM and close it on Thursday, September eighteenth, at four PM. Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So move.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion from Peter, second from MJ. Uh, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Ann Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa, yes. No opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Motion passes, motion carries. All right, town administrators' report.
Thank you. I would like to let the board know that the Shore and Harbor Committee meeting will, excuse me, that the Shore and Harbor Committee will be meeting on June eighteenth and will be discussing the abandoned dredge spoils that were left in Monument Beach about five years ago. D and R, DPW and I will be working with the committee to put a plan and budget together to remove the abandoned spoils as soon as possible. We anticipate the installation to begin next week for the new playground behind the community building and the splash pad is due to open on June eighteenth. We have not yet been able to secure a water, water safety instructor, but are still actively looking. If we are able to find someone, we will offer as many swim lessons as we can, even if it is an abbreviated schedule. Upon receipt from, of the letter from the North Sagamore Water District regarding the property tax turnovers, both the finance director and I reached out to the district. We better understand their schedule and the treasurer's staff have made some adjustments to our processes that we think will help address the concern. The finance director and I are committed to ensuring that the turnovers occur in a timely and consistent manner. I Swim has diverted eleven point eighty-eight tons of food waste from the landfill through the end of May so far in calendar year twenty twenty five. Comcast remains in regular contact with me regarding the upgraded equipment for Bourne TV. The fiber construction is complete and an update from the engineering team should be forthcoming later this week with a window for equipment installation. I also continue to work toward completing the outdoor Wi-Fi extension grant application for the community building recreation space before the July thirty-first deadline. I do wanna let the select board know that I Swim, DPW and I have remained very active participants in conversations with Sandwich, Barnspoke, Mashpee, Falmouth, Joint Base Cape Cod, and Converge regarding any potential sewage treatment and discharge options there. And finally, we have had some weather days, but work is progressing on the roof at Fire Station Three. Thank you.
I want to say thank you for your attention on that pile of dirt down at the entrance to Monument Beach. Uh, so, uh, I'm glad that you're all working towards a solution for that.
All right, thank you, Marlene. That was great. Um, so next item on our agenda is minutes from five thirteen. Do we have a motion to accept the minutes?
So move.
All right, uh, Peter, motion. Uh, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, uh, roll call vote. Uh,
I think there's a spelling, um,
Yes.
There's a spelling error. Waving is waving, W-A-V-I-N-G, and it should be waving, W-A-I-V-I-N-G. Just.
Uh, Ann Marie?
Yes.
Uh, yes, Jean, uh, Peter?
Yes.
Uh, MJ?
Yeah, yes.
No, yes. Uh, five zero. Zero. Okay, um, any committee reports this evening?
Now, we just, a few, a few, I have a few committee, um, 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 what's saying? Meetings coming up, I Swam on Thursday and then the bridge committee, uh, next Tuesday and stuff like that, so.
All right, and I think we have quite a list of correspondence. I will send over to Jean.
Yes, we do. Correspondence for June third, two thousand twenty-five. A, DEP letter, CIA EMR for July twenty-third through July twenty-fourth. B, mass development future use, standard letter. C, meet the grand store shop flyer. D, JVCC public mini calendar for June two thousand twenty-five. E, letter from Cape and Islands Realtors regarding watershed NOI. And E through Q, all letter regarding watershed notice of intent and they're all listed on the website if anyone needs to read them. Um, and then the last two items are R, late license renewal follow-up from the enterprises and S, late license renewal follow-up market council.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, and, uh, correspondence, future agenda items related to correspondence and other items, future discussion. We talked about those.
My question on that is, I, I thought I read on an internal calendar that we're gonna talk about the male, uh, the soco ex-, social equity marijuana
Yes.
on the fifteenth of July. Is that for the purposes of, uh, putting, putting it out the list and then interviewing applicants in August? Or what, what is that fifteenth, what is that date for?
July fifteenth?
I think it was just to, to, to start to discussions again, correct? That was what we had talked about, that we wanted to get back and talk about what the next steps were gonna be and how we were gonna put out the RFP for the new, for the social equity license.
We have to determine what the next steps are. We, we need a review process of, of, you know, we have to, we can't, we're not ready to go out with any type of, um, eval or even putting out the RFP. Well, it's not an RFP.
I mean, I guess we can discuss it and see what the, see what we,
We have to review the application. We have to create a relative, um, uh, process with respects to social equity. There's some, some things that aren't, that the state requires you to do that are not like the regular process that we just had. So I think we have to go through and, and kinda modify some things. We have to, how are we going to evaluate them? What, what's gonna be the point system?
I know, but I'm with the clarification so we know what you're thinking on for that date, that's all.
Oh, okay.
All right. Um, any other?
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I'm sure at that time we can then,
Should that, should there be maybe a,
Separate meeting?
Well, a subcommittee meeting or something to have some, so we have something to go by in terms of what we're gonna talk about.
Do you want, subcommittee as in the policy subcommittee?
Yeah.
Taking a crack at it first?
I mean, we started doing that, the policy subcommittee started doing the work at first and then we, maybe we can have a meeting and just organize some of the questions that need to be addressed at that meeting. How's that sound?
I mean, I'm not opposed to that if that's what you,
I, I'm not opposed to that either, to get some ducks, to get some ducks in a row.
So we're, we're organized at that meeting and not like all over the place.
Yeah, yeah, sounds good to me. All right, next meeting dates, we have June seventeenth. Thank you for that, for the select board. Uh, we've got a lot of work to do and we wanna do what's right by our people, so we're working hard for things. Uh, June twenty-fourth, Board of Sewer Commissions, uh, July first and fourteen, fifteenth, uh, Select Board, July twenty-ninth, Board of Sewer Commission. And do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All right.
Roll call.
Uh, roll call vote. We've got, yeah, Ann Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Melissa, yes. Uh, five zero zero. Do we adjourn?